That should be pretty quick, right? There's only two items that need to be addressed, I think.
Seven oh one three.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to go ahead and open up Town Council regular meeting for August nineteenth here at the Munster Town Hall. And with that, I'd like to have the roll call.
Councillor Schinkin.
Here.
Councillor Hopper.
Here.
Councillor Gardner.
Present.
Councillor Peterson.
Here.
Councillor Dallas.
Present.
All five councillors are here this evening.
With that, I'd like to ask you to all rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we'll start the meeting, and this is the public hearing for additional appropriations. And that is all that will be heard on this public hearing, and then the general open to the public comment will follow. So at this point, I'd like to open up the public hearing with respect to the additional appropriations. If anyone would like to speak on this, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and we'll be timing.
Hey, Brian D., eighty-two twenty-two White Oak Avenue. So for tonight for the appropriation, I just want to say that I'm not saying yes or no to the additional appropriations tonight. I'm just simply asking the council to think about the future debt that the town will have to consider. So one thing I'd like to point out is, you know, the reason appropriation is because the town currently can't meet its financial obligations without, you know, using its rainy day fund, which is a tip. The main purpose of it is for economic development. It is my understanding that these funds are to support increases for the current officers and do not include additional appropriations for eight new police officers resized from six officers originally requested. If we took the minimum starting salary now steps for a first-class officer, it would cost an additional six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, not including overtime. There would also be additional costs for each take-home vehicle, which would be roughly about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars each once equipped with all the property equipment. Then adding in benefits along with insurance premiums, and since Munster is self-insured, we can be looking at a total of three million dollars that needs to be appropriated each year. So considering both candidates for running for governor are looking at property tax reductions, the town's main source of income, we're going to have some very serious issues regarding what's, how we're going to be able to pay our debts going forward. So I would just like to have the town consider what they want to do regarding how they're going to appropriate these funds in the future, because the tip allocation funds are not infinite, and they will end in roughly about ten years. So, thank you, and looking to hear your thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward and speak on the additional appropriations? Again, is there anyone else that'd like to come forward and speak on the additional appropriations? Seeing that, I'll close with the public hearing on this, and then this will be covered later on in the meeting in which there'll be the vote. All right, with that, I'd like to talk about the open to the public comment. It's limited to two minutes, but the total of twenty minutes allotted for the public comment section. All speakers must sign in, must sign the public speaker's sign-in form prior to speaking. Please keep all comments civil, constructive, and related to public policy issues. At their discretion, the council may allow public comment to extend past twenty minutes, but it is not required to do so. All rules for public comment are posted right outside the door, so that it's the same program each time. With that, I'd like to open up the public comment. Whoever would like to speak, please come forward and sign your name and address on the sign-in sheet.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you, Stephen. My name is Jay McCormick, out of the ninety-five twenty-three White Oak Avenue. I would like to share this if I may. They've sent me an email, but just in case, I thought I'd bring some to you tonight. My concerns today are the, related to the water flow development, the water mains installation along White Oak Avenue, and ultimately the restoring of the pavement. There's been no work on this project since August second. So that caught my attention, and I did get a letter from Reece Riley. He asked at all residents before the project began, giving a contact name and person to recall there if there were any questions or concerns. They were, they were willing, totally willing to take the call and to be civil and concerned. They said that this wasn't their job, they've gone as far as they can have, because there is water pressure testing and bacterial testing that must, that needs to occur before they could go to their next step, and that that would be the subcontractor dire construction. So I called dire construction, and they told me that, yes, they, they would be doing that testing, but that it's the responsibility of the Department of Public Works to provide samples so that they can analyze. Both told me that generally it's, it's a series of five or six samples that are tested, so that they're sure and secure that we're all going to get clean water, which is important. And that there's generally a twenty-four-hour turnaround time on each of those six tests.
Sir, I'm sorry, but we have run out of time. If you could wrap it up, or we've got your comments here and.
One observe, one last observation, if I may make it. Each of the individuals that I contacted, as I said in here, were concerned and professional. There was a lot of finger pointing, though, as to who's responsible for what and when. If we began work today, it would take two months to finish the job. We're not working today because the plans are backward. Somebody needs to take ownership and leadership of this project, or it's going to be sitting there when the weather changes, and the thing is going, it's not going to be done.
So I, I do appreciate it, sir, but I, I believe we have the essence of what you'd like to say, and we do have a two-minute timer.
And I appreciate your reading it.
Thank you.
So you could get back with them and get all the information?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Mike Hanklett, one thirteen Beverly Place. I'm here on behalf of myself and our committee, the Beverly Parkway beautification group, and just to provide an update to the council as to where we are, what's been going on. I spoke with Councillor Nellens on the twelfth, and it looks like committed in, within thirty-six hours, they come out and mow down our weeds. So at least we're, we've got grass, grass, a grassy parkway at this point, and we can see around, and people can cut through and so forth. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate your commitment to further by Labor Day seating, slid seating, grass watering, et cetera, to at least get it back to something that we can, we can look at and kind of be proud of. And I got a note from Public Works this afternoon that we responded to, that they, by the twenty-sixth, the week of the twenty-sixth, they hope to get back to us. They're going to meet with, they have met and continue to meet with the landscape architect to get designs together, some ideas that we can, you know, afford, and we can all be pleased with. We'll get together to, hopefully, they'll get back to me on the week of the twenty-sixth, and hopefully meet very quickly after that. So again, appreciate your support. It's just an update. Thanks again.
No bears.
You're welcome.
Hello, everybody. I just signed, did you sign in?
Have you?
I did.
Excellent. Thank you. I didn't see you up there.
Nope, my, my colleague, Georgie Anne, signed in, so I'm just going to be speaking on behalf of us. So my name's Elaine Reyna, I'm a Munster resident, one zero zero four four Red Blood Road, Flint Creek. And we're here today on behalf of Logan's Love, which is a local nonprofit organization, five oh one C three, benefiting the autism and disabilities community in northwest Indiana, working, yeah.
No, go ahead.
Okay, working closely with first responders. One of our main initiatives that you might have heard of is that we are working on getting Ben's new bags to all the first responders in Lake County. And those are provided by Matt Kodecheck, who is a first responder, and that comes along with the training. So that's just one of the things that, that we are really focused on right now. We had our second annual autism walk for northwest Indiana yesterday, and it was amazing. The final numbers aren't in, but we raised over ten thousand dollars to put back into the disabilities community and homeless safety. We're here today basically just to formally introduce ourselves, give you our contact information, and invite all of you and our community to our first golf outing, our first fundraising golf outing, which is going to be held out with your part next month in September on the twenty-eighth. So I'm just going to hand over some flyers here, and we hope to see more of you in the future.
Thank you very much. You're going to give us some of those?
Yeah.
All right, is there anyone else that'd like to come forward in the open to the public session? I ask one more time, is there anyone else that'd like to come forward and speak in the open to the public session? If not, I will close that, and we will move on to our consent agenda.
I make a motion we pass the consent agenda, or make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
That presented as, do we have support?
I second that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion, comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Ellis.
Yes. Okay, that takes us up to old business and item A is ordinance nineteen sixty, additional appropriations.
Excuse me, council president, we did receive some electronics, yes, that's okay. I can report that we had twenty-four emails that said no to Ridge Road, the Ridge Road Project. We had twenty-one that said no to getting involved with the Center for Visual and Performing Arts. We had six emails that said yes to Ridge Road, the Ridge Road Project. We have one person that sent an email supporting the expansion of Terrace Avenue. And then I have one email that asked how many of the emails that we get come from unique addresses.
All right, thank you very much. And now we're ready for nineteen sixty.
So this is second read on the ordinance, additional appropriations. You held a public hearing earlier in the meeting. There are the additional appropriations in the tip allocation fund and the general fund. One fund, the tip fund would be, the appropriations would be in effect on passage of the ordinance, and the general fund has to go down to the GLG for their seal of cool.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion to approve introduced ordinance nineteen sixty percent.
I'll second.
The motion, we have a second. Further discussion, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I do want to weigh in. There was a comment by a member of the public that I think grossly has characterized what is occurring here with these ordinance. There was some suggestion that we are going in deeply into debt in a way that's unaffordable. That's, that's well beyond true. Reality here is, is that this is a process that has been studied by this council. Part of this purchase includes automobiles, police vehicles. That's a, that's a one-time purchase. It's not going to be a reoccurring purchase for a number of years. The alternative would be leasing these vehicles, and we're studying and determining that the purchase would provide enhanced benefits in terms of staff retention and recruiting. The police chief presented before the council and gave, as I recall, a forty-minute explanation of the public safety needs for this ordinance, which included enhanced street patrols. All of these things are presently necessary. And I think the concern about what may happen ten years from now, if and when, with all the contingencies that go into that, pales in comparison to the immediate need. So I am happy to support this motion, and I intend to vote for it when it is put forward to vote that.
Mr. President, point, point, a question. Ordinance nineteen sixty is just the appropriation of the current allocation of increased officers and street vehicles. This is not, doesn't have anything to do with increased traffic patrol, like the next ordinance would be, right? This is just about the existing ordinance and paying for what we currently have.
This, this ordinance is for the appropriation of the funds to pay for the vehicles and proportion of the salaries. The next ordinance addresses that.
The other item with regard to traffic enhancement, things like that. Okay.
All right, do they have any other questions, comments on ordinance nineteen sixty? Seeing none, I'll ask for the roll call.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Ellis.
Yes. That takes us up to ordinance nineteen sixty-one, which is an amendment to the salary ordinance.
And council had first read on this ordinance at the last meeting. This would create an additional four patrol officers, additional two sergeants, and create the position of a deputy chief, as well as some housekeeping type things to bring in formally into this ordinance, some things that happened by resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I also move to adopt ordinance nineteen sixty-one as second readings amendment.
I second that.
We have a motion, we have support. Further comments, questions?
I have a question. It, it's I guess the first question is, is there a reason why this is being done before we get into the full budgeting process of the town for two thousand twenty-five? It's, it's my understanding that the six new police officers would not be hired, what we found out this past Thursday at our agenda review meeting, until late in this year, or even most more, more than likely next year. Is, is there, is there a reason why we wanted to do this prior to our full budgeting process?
Councillor Gardner, I thought we spoke about this for forty-five minutes to an hour at our agenda meeting. You were okay with it.
That question was never answered. Okay, I'm asking the question again. Why is this being done now, when, before the budget, the full budgeting process that we have?
The purpose of this is so that we are prepared, if we were lucky enough, to find additional qualified officers, where they are not just standing on the corner, but we'd also like to be prepared. And yes, realistically, it may not happen right away. On the other hand, we may find an officer or two that is worthy of us to hire.
I, I thought the chief said that we have only so many training officers, and we need to at least hire the first three officers that were already allocated right now. And that, again, just perchance, that we, we're going to go through a full-fledged process if we're going to.
Absolutely.
So, okay, so again, I guess the other question that I have is regarding, with regards to the upcoming budget, is there other things that the police department is going to be asking for from, from a equipment standpoint, or is there anything else that we have that is coming around from? Again, just try to get, because we're, we're only a month and a half away from budgeting happening. And, and our town has a full-fledged salary study of non-sworn, you know, personnel. And we heard at the agenda review meeting, at the end of the agenda review meeting, that there's going to be a couple of people in Public Works going to be leaving pretty shortly. And much like the gentleman's talking about some of this road construction projects, I am concerned that we aren't fully staffed in our other departments. Water Department's one of them. Our head of water department left two months ago, and, and we currently don't have anybody that's able to do testing. We, you know, we, we contract that out. And, and I guess part of this is, is looking at the whole picture of the town government and making sure that we can handle, and then we put the proper pieces in place here that we can, you know, move forward with some of these other hires.
Councillor Gardner, we did find out just the end of last week that one of our employees in the water department did pass his test. So we're putting that, we're getting that in behind us. We do have a search firm that's working on the director of Public Works. So that's, that's moving along. I don't, at this point, it's still early in that program, but we do have that moving on. And additionally, the employees that leave, they will be able to fill those positions. They have to submit the requisitions to hire them, and those will be filled.
Well, we might find out, much like we found out with, with the police department, and again, the good news is the most recent pay increase has helped us with attracting new officers. But I think we might find the same thing happening with Public Works Department, is that the amount that we were paying might be lower than industry averages. And if the salary study comes back that we need to be paying more for those positions to acquire a higher level of, of personnel, that we can do different things, are we going to be able to do that?
Well, first of all, we'll have to see what the study says, and we'll have to know where we're at. The next thing is then, once, if we find out that there needs to be an adjustment, we'll have to see where we can handle that and how we can afford it. But we have to have that information first. And again, we did submit for that study, and we're anticipating that here towards the end of the year.
We should have this study, I would think, in the next few months, and then council and staff would have to review it, make recommendations, and see what council wants to do.
I, I guess, another question that I would have is, in the last budget cycle, there was some discussion about a mental health employee for the police department. Has, is that part of these six new hires, or has that, has the mental health personnel been handled?
Myself and our club treasurer have been talking about doing that on a part-time basis with someone. And we start those talks, but that's, our plan is to bring them on first part-time, see if it works out, how we anticipated it working out, and then down the road, if it is working well, come back and ask for a full-time.
Okay, thank you. Again, and I, I appreciate the opportunity to ask these questions. I, as I heard from one of my fellow councillors today, if I was asking, if I'm grandstanding, I am certainly not grandstanding. I think our police department is fantastic. I think it's great that in the last years, over the last four or five years, we've gone down in robberies, burglaries, thefts, auto thefts, vandalism. They're all lower today than what they were in two thousand nineteen, and I give Chief Sheckel and his staff, his police department, and quite frankly, the residents of Munster, a big handle on it. It is one of the reasons why we are the fifth safest city in the country, or in, in the, in. I do this mainly, again, as I, I guess this discussion's been going on for six months with other councillors. When, when I was involved with the agenda review meeting two months, two weeks ago, that was the second time that I heard about this increase in police officers. The first time, chief, you talked to us for about fifteen minutes, and that was that. I did not know that the other councillors were talking about this for the last six months. So I apologize that I wasn't involved in the conversations that you had. I do think this is all part of being good stewards, being fiscally responsible. And also, I think there's a public education portion of this, that I think more of public knows about what's going on with our department, and what our other departments are doing, and that we're not, that we are still looking at making sure that our public works department, our park departments, our parks departments, code enforcement planning, they all get the resources they need to become leaders and ahead of the curve with the other towns in this area.
Thank you, Councillor Gardner. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll. Seeing none, we'll call for the roll.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
No.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. So that takes us up to thank you, counselors. That takes us up to new business. And we have a letter of engagement for our twenty twenty-four geo bond issue.
Yes, we have used the firm of Barnes and Thorndorpe for a number of years to do our geo bond and we're looking to engage with them again. Historically, when we have gone for a general obligation bond, we have gone through the process and then bid it out, sold the bonds ourselves. And what we would like to do this year is work with the Indiana Bond Bank where we believe we can get significantly better rates. Very, basically the same process that that the town is used to going through. It's just we'll be going with them. It's a whole purchase of bonds. That's how we are able to achieve, how the bond bank is able to achieve a better rate than we would be able to on our own. There is a component of this where there is a conflict in that Barnes and Thorndorpe also helps, also acts as bond counsel to issue the bonds that the bond bank puts out. There's another law firm that would handle the agreement the town would enter into with the bond bank. So if there were ever a dispute, we would Barnes and Thorndorpe would drop out of that dispute. But it's necessary to bring that forward, be sure council's aware, the bond bank is aware of it. If council decides to afford with this, by approving this engagement letter, there is language in it that acknowledges it and you do have the ability to waive that conflict if you choose.
Do we have a motion on this?
Council President, I want to make a motion to confirm the letter of engagement with Barnes and Thorndorpe to serve as bond counsel for the twenty twenty-four go bond to issue with the Indiana Bond Bank.
Do we have support?
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Do we have questions, comments? I would just like to make a comment with the clerk treasurer's office. They always do a very good job with the money and where we get our bonds at. And what we're looking for is the lowest interest rate to us, the cost to the town, so that we are paying the least amount of money for that bond money that we receive. So with that, like to call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. Item B under new business is engagement extension for the planning services and these are being used by the building department.
Building department so that staff can focus on the zoning code revisions that they are working on. HWC has been handling the more day-to-day things that happen for the planning and the easy requests and petitions that are coming through, same term as the previous one.
So this is an extension of our contract that we already have in place.
Correct. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve contract amendment number one of the letter of engagement with HWC for on-call services.
I'll second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll call the roll, please.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to any reports to present.
I do not. Thank you for looking at me tonight. It's been a slow two weeks. I'll catch you in September.
Any portfolio reports to present tonight? Counselor Gardner, do you want to announce anything about the city foundation at this point?
Yeah, the Monster Civic Foundation had their meeting earlier tonight. Counselor Peterson and myself were representing the the council. The the civic Mondays, there's, I think, I believe there's one more civic Monday night concert. There's upcoming light the night item coming up and also Saturday, September eighth is or Sunday, September eighth will be the Monarch Festival at Heritage Park.
And the cruise night is?
The car cruise, Cruising the Ridge, will be on Saturday, September seventh from three o'clock to eight o'clock. That event is being brought to you by the Chamber of Commerce and also a newly formed group called The Ridge. There'll be twenty vendors or so right now. There's about thirty-five cars signed up and there's two bands that will be played at Monster Church. About Little Giants and I don't know the other band name, but Cloud Nine. Thanks, Brad. But again, we thank the The Ridge Group and also the Chamber for sponsoring that event. And it's called Cruising the Ridge. It's Saturday, September seventh from three o'clock to eight o'clock and look forward to a nice event.
Thank you very much. I do apologize for calling on you, but I I thought it was, you have a number of interesting activities coming up, so. All right, announcement, all town council meeting will be held at seven P M unless otherwise noted. September fifth, regular town council meeting and regular redevelopment meeting to follow. Looking for.
Can I just note that those are on Thursday this, that week because of the Labor Day holiday? Don't come unloved.
Yes, the holiday. All right. Motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion adjourned.
Second.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. With that, the meeting is adjourned and we will go into redevelopment commission meeting immediately. Hey, we'd like to call the redevelopment commission meeting to order for August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and we will cover roll call.
Commissioner Schinkin.
Here.
Commissioner Hopper.
Here.
Commissioner Gardner.
Present.
Commissioner, excuse me, Peterson.
Here.
And Commissioner Nellens.
Present. That takes us up to the public comment and it's the same rules as in the regular meeting and the main part of the rules are posted outside.
Mr. Chairman, just for point of order, our school board representative, Mr. John Castro, is also here.
My throat was so parched, I got distracted and forgot. My apologies.
I wanted to jump in and help.
Thank you. Thank you all.
We appreciate seeing you as always.
Thank you very much.
Castro. Thank you for being here.
All right. Thank you all.
Is there anyone that'd like to come forward and address the redevelopment commission in the open to the public session? Is there anyone that'd like to come forward and address the redevelopment commission in the open to the public session? Is there anyone that'd like to come forward in the open to the public session for the redevelopment mission? Seeing none, we'll close the open to the public and that takes us to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A motion, a second. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Commissioner Schinkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens.
Yes. There's no old business, no new business, reports, announcements, looking for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
The motion, we have support.
Second.
All votes in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That includes the redevelopment commission.
Hi, Hopper. Please, Mr. Castro, I hit your name down. I was ready to be in there. And I, I mean, I did it, but I'm glad you made it here and. Always nice to see you.
Not you might be asking for this.